Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. This is the second Citizen Request meeting of a City Council Subcommittee, and the idea is to walk through a bit of the CIP process and then to discuss the requests that we did receive. My name is Karen Conard. I'm the city manager here. Let me take a moment to let you all know who's sitting up here with me. To my right is Abby Mills from our Finance Department. We also have Peter Britt from Planning and Sustainability, Peter Rice from Public Works, Nathan Loney and Zach McLaughlin from the School Department, Andrew, who's a colleague of Abby's, in the Finance Department. We also have Councilors Rich Blaylock, John Tabor, Beth Moreau, and City Clerk serving us tonight is June Philbrook. So, welcome to tonight's conversation. We will give a brief presentation for those of you who are less than familiar with how the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan works. We'll give a little bit of a primer on that, and then we'll dive right into the requests that we received this year and the analysis we did so far. So, let me take a moment to transition to the slides. So, we will, our goals for tonight, to give you that overview, to review the requests, review the staff analysis, answer questions in as informal a way as we can, and then to discuss next steps and recommendations to both the Planning Board and the City Council. There we go. So, for those of you less than familiar with how this works, what is the Capital Improvement Plan? It really is, as it says here, "A multi-year financial and infrastructure planning tool." Please remember, it remains a plan. It's not a budget. It doesn't have money attached to it until such time as it becomes incorporated into the city budget. So, it's something that takes all year to produce. Just as soon as we've passed a budget, we're ready and looking forward to the next round of all of these conversations. It includes six years of planning, and again, it's a plan. It's not, it doesn't have dollars attached to it. And the idea of this, of the plan itself is to be as responsive and responsible to the citizens and to the staff who are helping to program how the monies get spent throughout the year. A good point one of my colleagues likes to say is there are lots of great ideas in this plan. Not all of them rise to the top in any given year, and that's the challenge of both the Planning Board and the City Council, is to weigh those priorities and to think about competing interests for limited resources. So, this kickoff of the CIP will culminate in a public hearing in February and adoption in March, so that it then rolls into the City Council budget for the following year. Why do we have a CIP? So, the important thing of a CIP is it helps to identify needed capital improvements throughout the city. It helps guide the allocation of fiscal resources. It's a plan that we all follow for future city expenditures, and it ensures that needed facilities are provided within the city's financial capacity. It keeps us in check on a year-to-year paces. Overall, we look to maintain an accessible and inclusive planning process for our residents and for everyone who uses the services of the city. And with that, what actually makes it, what makes a project eligible? What could you say that could qualify or determine something's eligible for the CIP? And these are the six boxes that we use, the lens through which we look through at projects. So, does it involve construction or expansion of a public facility, street, or utility or infrastructure? Is it rehab of an existing facility that costs in excess of $50,000? Does it involve design or planning study work related to the master plan? Is it an item or equipment? Think rolling, not rolling stock, non-vehicular costing $50,000 or more with a depreciable life? And also included are the replacement and purchases of vehicles. We call it rolling stock, again, with that $50,000 threshold. Lastly, an item that is qualifying for a CIP element sheet would be land acquisition. So, when we talk about how to fund these projects, we have to adhere to the city's longstanding financial policies, and there are two main ways to pay for a capital project. You can use general fund capital outlay, which is cash. Think of it as cash and pay-as-you-go funding, and we typically budget no more than 2% of the prior year budget for the cash portion of the CIP. And then when we speak about the debt, we also look to follow the longstanding policy of not going over more than 10% of the budget in debt. So, with that, here's the first slide on capital outlay or the pay-as-you-go. It shows the chart of no more than 2% of prior year. We are pleased to share that in the current year that we're in, we kept the capital outlay percentage at 1.37%, and you'll see how that floats year to year. You'll notice a steep decline in '21 and '22 and '23, and that was certainly COVID-related. And what we tried to do in this current fiscal year is start to restore some of that cash capital outlay. Then we move on to the debt portion of this conversation, again, keeping to the, keeping our debt service level below 10% of our overall budget. And in FY '24, we are at 7.74%, right about, almost the same number as last year, which was 7.72. The goal here is to be stable and predictable and to stay within our limits. You'll see the box here, and this is typical for, let me move this. This is typical for a six-year outlook. As we're in the current year and the few out-years, it's always staying below 10. As the projects build and rise and we factor in escalations of cost, you'll see this creeping over 10%. We always bring it in under 10% as we move through a CIP, but this is a typical chart in the way that it is depicted. So, something that this current council was intent on doing was setting goals and then looking to have what we do on a daily basis help them achieve those goals. And that's why this council last year started a process by which we had a more inclusive and public conversation about the citizen requests that we receive every year. Because, Abby, we've been receiving these since-
FY '17.
FY '17. But we just started having this public info session and public outreach. And you'll see on this slide that it touches three of the seven City Council goals that speak to inviting and honoring input, encouraging engagement, looking to enhance best practices of how to deliver good government, and to consistently communicate with folks. So, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Peter Britt, who's going to speak to what we actually received this year and to help walk you through the analysis. You may want to grab your-
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so in terms of the numbers for this year from Citizens Request, we received a total of 95 submissions. When you look at those submissions in total, there's a few that overlap. We ended up consolidating them into 47 unique projects, and the like, the submissions that were similar were grouped into these 47 projects. We divided the projects into six categories to talk about them tonight, and the six projects, six of the 47 projects are eligible for consideration. These are projects that were reviewed by city staff and are potentially eligible as future projects. 24 of the projects fall into the category of existing projects, so these submissions are found to be requests of projects that were already found in the capital process or capital plan. And then 17 requests were best suited for another process. They didn't really fit this model. The projects either did not meet the requirements for a CIP project, or they need to go through a different process in order to advance to a CIP. So, for FY '25, the 95, again, as I said, brought down into 47. I'll just break down the numbers a little bit here. Six of those CIP-eligible projects fall into school infrastructure, parks and playgrounds, art, historic documents and artifacts. 24 other requests that were already in the, are already in or an existing CIP project. And then 17 requests were determined to be better served by another process or board by staff. Either they're under the purview of another board, committee, or process, they're not city property, or it's not an appropriate capital request. And then the category with the eligible projects that we determined could be eligible for the CIP involves school infrastructure, parks and playgrounds, art and historic documents and artifacts. I'll come back to these specific projects, and we'll go through them in a little more detail. I'll just finish off the slideshow, and we won't go into the detail until we're done going through all the categories. Again, 24, you can see quickly, already existing in the CIP are listed here, and we'll talk about those more. And then the 17 that are better served by another process are shown here. So, just to talk quickly about the next steps before we go into the details, where does a citizen request go after this meeting? So, the eligible projects, if they're recommended to move forward into the CIP, city staff will process it for a timeline and costing and funding options, and it'll be prepared and provided to the Planning Board and City Council to be reviewed in the context of the full CIP with other CIP requests. If it's deemed for another process, then the interested parties are encouraged to submit request, project requests through that recommended channel, which will be talked about on each one. And then existing projects, many of existing projects had existed in the CIP sheet or on project webpages. They're added to this report. Interested residents are encouraged to utilize these links and to review these additional, this additional information on the existing projects. And then all the CIP requests will appear in Appendix One of the CIP when it's put out for publication. Just a snapshot of the timeline of the process and where we are. We've gone through the kickoff in August, the resident submission process in September, staff submissions in October, and a project update. And then November 9th is where we are tonight. And then December 12th, the Planning Board will have a subcommittee, an advisory committee that reviews CIP projects. On December 21st, the full Planning Board reviews the CIP and then votes to recommend its adoption to the City Council. And then in the winter or spring of 2024, the City Council will review the CIP and hold a public hearing to adopt the final document. And then in the spring of '24, the final funded project list will be determined as part of the overall budget process.
Let me just add something here, that on December 4th, at the council's, first of its two December council meetings, it would be great to have a council rep give a report back on the findings of this group. It's too soon to do it, I think, for Monday's meeting, but that way we can notice it and share with the public what you all see as recommendations and comments that should be brought forth. So, Peter, you want me to go back to the six page?
Yeah, maybe the CIP-eligible page, if you back. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, should we start with the school infrastructure? How do you-
So, we have copies that are floating around this room, and we have extra copies up at the front table that will break these down by bucket. So, the first bucket we're talking about is the six that have been determined to be eligible in the CIP. So, Peter's going to walk through that now, but you're welcome to come up and grab a copy because we won't be able to project it here. But Peter's going to walk through them, and we'll talk by department, teeing up the school department folks first.
Yeah, so the first one under school infrastructure is the air conditioning in public schools. We received a request for air conditioning to have centralized air in many of the classrooms. I don't know how, I guess go through all the details here, but, yeah. So, this was a request to do that citywide in all schools. There are times when the temperatures are high. Air conditioning would require significant upgrades in that order of $6 to $8 million. And at this point, the cost of that is so high that staff doesn't recommend putting it forward on those. I don't know if the school wants to speak more to it, but I can keep going through these or-
Yeah, I can just quickly, you know, we're, I would start with saying, we're super appreciative of being in a community where the council emphasizes citizen contribution, at the same time being in a community where citizens then want to utilize that to improve the experience of their students and staff. Then we're in the unfortunate situation sometimes of then having to balance, well, what are the, you know, the operational and financial considerations of those requests? In this particular case, with the two items that are both connected to air conditioning and a number of citizens' requests, I think from our department, the way we look at it is, as you think about your 2% and 10% kind of guidelines, we assume that there is only a certain amount of the pie that is going to be available for the schools. And as we look at what else is in the CIP, the offsets that we would need to make in order to take on this project, we think are not offsets we want to do, that there are other things connected to the delivery of instruction and the operation of the schools that are more important. We are unbelievably sympathetic. We've been in those classrooms. I've talked to those teachers, and I've talked to those parents about those experiences that happened at the very beginning part of our year and the very end of our year. But at this point, the number of days that are included and the impact it has on our operations, we just don't feel we can justify the expense and lose those other things that are in the CIP.
Might we jump to the third one?
Yeah, the second one is very similar. The third one is air purification in the schools. So, again, this is a request to have active air purification installed with the HVAC systems in the citywide in all public schools. And this proposal would, has a very specific project to do active pure, a brand type of brand of purification that they wanted to put in here. And the analysis that was done by the citizen who did this determined that there would be a cost savings through the reduction in substitute teachers and costs that would occur from that. Essentially, a similar, a similar problem here is the, really the cost, the high cost of it, and it's a commercial solution, which the school department only has a little bit of knowledge about. To spend $2.2 million and $250,000 in electrical upgrades, and annual maintenance are projected to be $168,000. There are efforts ongoing now to do HVAC upgrades and efficiencies, and the proposed FY '30 funding will begin the process of value in upgrading the high school HVAC systems and anticipated career center in terms of the final report. The school department will consider contemporary solutions throughout that process and may continue to consider implementing solutions like the one proposed as future renovations are completely completed throughout the district.
Zach, Nathan, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I think that summarizes it. I mean, the combination of a single vendor that would be looking at, and in general, we understand the value of improved HVAC going forward, but outside of that, you know, Peter to type once.
Does it make sense to ask if people want to stop there? Because otherwise, these guys get to leave us.
Nice question.
Sure. It's your meeting.
I know you don't want us probably spend the money, and honestly, it's a lot of money, $68 million, to put air conditioning in all the schools. Is there a possibility of exploring the option and what the cost would be to maybe in, if there's a certain side of the building that gets hotter because it gets more sun or something, of putting like portable units in maybe just those rooms or something like that?
So, the quick, I'll give you the quick version, and then you can probably give a broader scope on this, but the, we did some, we had the superintendent's experiment this year where I allowed folks in those couple of days to bring in some units into individual spaces, and we're not in a position, two things happened. One, our electrical wasn't up to the task, so we, so that turned into teachers running back and forth to throw switches throughout the course of the day, and the actual impact on temperatures was not that, was not that great. I think people appreciate the fact we were trying to make an effort, but in terms of, you know, it was not a functioning solution in terms of what we're trying to do overall.
Thank you.
So, what other ways can we mitigate these super-hot days?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a, it's a, I don't know that we have, I don't foresee us, we don't have a standard by which we would, some districts around us are, some districts in Massachusetts canceled school. I worry about that as, in terms of the reality of what that could be if we have a year where we have, you know, a couple of weeks of time that's hotter than we would like it to be, what that standard would be by which we make those types of decisions. We don't have tons of good, I mean, we do things that you would have had when you were in school. We have fans, you know, we, teachers try to be thoughtful about, about the types of activities that we're conducting. Teachers very often are taking students outside in certain situations during those days. And I hate to say this, but to a certain extent, we need to kind of tough out a few days on each end of the year. As we, and I know people have had conversations, you know, we continue to talk about kind of climate change and what that might look like, you know, I think we need to continue to explore, you know, monitor those trends over time and think about if, you know, if three or four days on each end becomes three or four weeks, at what point are we having a significant impact on learning loss? And does our analysis of the need around some of these numbers change? We'll see, you know, as time goes on.
Great, thanks.
Just one question on the, it mentions that electrical service would need to be upgraded, and it said the estimated cost would be $6 to $8 million. I'm just wanted some clarity on, is that just the cost of the electrical, not including the cost of the HVAC, you know, what?
Yeah, that's the, that's the cost. So, we, we've done the analysis a couple of times in my short four years, looking at ways that we might solve. And the numbers at Dondaro, let me frame it, if I may, for 30 seconds, just say, 680,000 square feet in our schools here in Portsmouth, better than roughly 75%, I think I would say, is air-conditioned. We have air conditioning. You've been involved in that conversation in recent years at New Franklin Elementary, bounded on both sides by highways and noise being an issue and air quality. That elementary school now is air-conditioned for that reason, but the middle school has air conditioning. Most of Portsmouth High School has air conditioning, although there are elements there that we intend to address, starting in fiscal '30, with a renovation project we expect on the CTE Center there. It comes up on the list for state support, and we see that all tied together for the synergies that we can find. So, what remains really is Dondaro Elementary and Little Harbor, and of course, the space at Sherburne School that we're vacating, now that we're working on the renovation over Community Campus. So, both Dondaro and Little Harbor have been reviewed. The numbers without electrical work ran roughly $2 million at Dondaro and three plus at Little Harbor. Now, those numbers are a couple of years old, so adding in the, adding in the costs of upgrading electrical service is where the facilities team came up with that six-plus million. So, it's a, I will say to you that we are, we are pleased and grateful that all of our buildings have air handling. So, even though we're not conditioning the air, and in these two schools, we're not modifying it, we're not dehumidifying even, we are in fact refreshing air. So, we do have moving air, which, when we faced the pandemic, put us light-years ahead of many districts around the state, so.
And just one other question. I know obviously air quality is a concern now, especially after the COVID and post-pandemic. Like you mentioned, that we do circulate the air in the schools like that, is there any way that we measure how the cleanness of the air? Or is there any sort of standard, any, I didn't know, you know, how we look at that?
If I could grab Mr. Lynchy right now, which I can't because he's not with us, but he'd rattle stuff off for you, because I know that, obviously, that was an enormous element of his responsibility through, through the pandemic, and we did, we did work that problem and that situation. We upgraded our filtration systems. We found that some of those upgrades drove more maintenance issues because, as one of these requests tonight, as a citizen suggests, moving through thicker, heavier, better filtration is more demanding of the mechanical systems that are moving the air. So, we confronted that and found that, but he has periodically throughout the, throughout the experience we've just come through and does normally test for particulates and the like. Does the same thing with water. All of those are on his bailiwick, and so I think we could drill down with him to talk more about, but he's, he's satisfied right now that the work that we're doing is, is providing us, you know, a healthy environment, so.
Excellent. No, I'm glad we're always looking at that, if, you know, if it was to ever go over a certain cusp, you know, where it become dangerous, then we would know, and-
Well, and I think as we continue to, as we continue ongoing maintenance, which this community has been very supportive of in the facilities, I think we'll continue to look at the newest contemporary solutions so that we can, as we cut the ceilings open, as we work with those systems, we upgrade them, not only for current but future needs.
Thank you.
I mean, I'd rather see the playground at Little Harbor get upgraded, which is a concern, than, than an $8 million investment for a couple of days a year. And they can go outside, get the fresh air.
So, in terms of format, we'll go through the six that we deemed eligible, and then we'll pause and see if anyone here wants to speak to those six, and then we'll, we'll go on from there. All right, what's next?
Okay, so the next category is the parks, playgrounds, and recreation category, and this one is Haven Park lighting. So, pedestrian crosswalk safety, installing a path lighting along the length of the sidewalk, bisecting Haven, Livermore to Edward. And the park has interior lighting and none along the sidewalks, very dark at night, making it unsafe to walk through for pedestrians. Livermore Street, exit of the park, vehicular traffic exiting Hancock Street, blinds pedestrians with their headlights. City staff recommends this for consideration as a potential future CIP project. Prior to formally creating a CIP project, a scope of work and public support should be determined for this project.
Can I just pause there and ask Peter Rice to explain the timing of that? You know, the work it takes to get something on the CIP? Is that a-
In terms of coming up with costs associated with it?
Right, right.
Well, it really depends on the scope of the project. If it's simply putting a Cobra Head light, which is typical street, street light, it's a request into EverSource and asking for an additional street light, which is not that challenging. I don't suspect that's what people are looking for. I think they're probably looking for pedestrian lighting, which could be bollards, you know, lit bollards along the paths, which would look nice. However, that becomes trenching, and there's costs associated with that and the light fixtures and things like that. So, it really needs to, in order for us to be able to give a reasonable number for planning, we need to understand what the scope is. And we recently upgraded the park and, you know, spent a lot of resources on that, and it's in nice shape at the moment. I guess, and this is one request, you know, it wasn't a groundswell of people saying, "We need lighting here." The park has been lit like this for years. I'd really, before make solid recommendations to move forward, I'd want to understand the scope, and I'd also want to understand the general public support for it. There's a lot of parks that need attention, and, you know, is this, is this where we want to spend our resources?
Okay. Good. Okay.
Just one comment on that. I would hope if we were to look at that, that the abutters were talked to, or at least, because I would think anyone that lives around that park would be most impacted by any lighting. I don't know how much benefit it would provide young children that would use it. I know I brought my niece over there, and it's, it's a playground for a younger age set, it seems.
No, I believe this is Haven Park, not the Haven School, not this Haven School playground.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes, yes, yes. Okay, okay, sorry.
It's okay.
All right, so our next category is art, historic documents, and artifacts. And this is a request for funds to be put into a public art trust fund submitted on behalf of the city's Public Art Review Committee, or PARK as they're called, the new committee. The request involves $25,000 to annually deposit it through the CIP to be added to the Public Art Trust Fund to commission public art for the city's parks, neighborhoods, gateways, and public buildings. The Economic and Community Development Department supports a standing committee on behalf of the Public Art Review Committee. This committee will be responsible for reviewing and making recommendations to the council on all issues related to public art, responsible for administering the 1% for art from the large, from large city projects, and the request is to establish a baseline of funds that can be used for things like applying for federal grants and matching those federal grants and having sort of a basis of funds to do that with. And then in working with the Finance Department, they determined the correct place for these funds would be in the Public Art Trust Fund. The request is for $25,000 annually, which would be $150,000 over six years. There's more information on the Public Art Review Committee homepage about this committee as well.
And I see the chair of, the chair of that committee's here, and maybe when we get to the, the public comment, we'll speak to the last item, and then we'll open it up for comments on that.
So, the last item is historic record and artifact conservation and storage assessment. I'll try not to read through all of this, but really, this is a way to conserve some of the important public records held by multiple departments, finance, city clerk, library, legal, school department, police and fire, along with collections held by the Athenaeum, Strawberry Bank, and historical reports with the Historical Society. The public-private facility will reduce redundancies and make more cost-effective long-term solutions to determine the facility needs for the studies that includes architectural study of $40,000, security of $5,000, and HVAC of $25,000. And the scope should include a full understanding of the quantity of items to be archived, and the idea would be this is to forever preserve these important artifacts. I think that's the bulk of it. Securing the collection will require hardened and robust construction. Card access will be required to get into it. The mechanical and HVAC is very dependent on the items, but fire suppression would also be required. And the archive, Blue McConney, is seeking $65,000 for the initial conservation assessment in FY '25, and then $75,000 in year two for architectural studies. From a staff standpoint, the city has been challenged with housing and maintaining these historical records and artifacts. The historical archives facility would be beneficial to the city. Looking at, looking at what's there, it would be a way to manage, would manage those, those needs, and they have a wealth of documentation and historic artifacts that really need some kind of attention in this way, so it's something that we've been looking at for a while. Considering the scope of the collection, staff estimated the cost of a full conservation assessment to be more than initially assessed with costs closer to $150,000 for year one, and the year-two assessment in out-year should be reassessed for the cost at that time.
So, that wraps the six that were submitted that are deemed eligible for consideration by the CIP. Before we open it up to the public, any council questions, thoughts, comments?
Has the Archive Committee looked at the Land and Community Heritage Program, LCHIP, as a possible grant source? I would think- as a possible grant source? I would think a city as historic as Portsmouth, you know, might be a good contender for an L-CHIP grant.
Yeah, I think part of the request included that, the idea that the funds would be able to be used for match to grants like that, but yeah, that's a good idea. I don't think I...
We'll make sure the staff has that in mind. So why don't we do this? If you'd like to speak to any of the six that we've just talked about, please come up, grab a chair at the table, and grab a mic, and give us your name and your address, and share your thoughts with us, if you would, if anybody would like to.
Someone should have to step up.
Chris Dwyer, 600 Broad Street, and Chair of the Park Committee, both to be able to answer questions. I think, Councilor Tabor, that's an interesting idea. We were the first to ever have L-CHIP support a cemetery, so it's possible that we could break ground with public art. But yes, we wanted to build up some dollars that we could use for matching funds in a case like that. As you all have probably seen, since we did the African Bering Ground, there's really been an appetite for public art in the city. We have one piece that's been commissioned for the Bohanko Gateway Park, but also see that these dollars would build up as match to private dollars for extending some public art in that section of the community, as well as maintenance for some of the existing public art that we have. So we wanted to follow the model that's been used for land acquisition, and that's been used for cemeteries over time, knowing that $25,000 is not probably, unless there's an unusual match, going to help us very much, but that over a multi-year period, we would bank some dollars to be able to take advantage of things that came up.
Great. Thanks for coming. All right, if anyone wants to speak on this group, great, and if not, we will move into the ones that already exist in the CIP, and we'll spend a brief moment of time on those.
So these are projects that are existing in the CIP, and there's 24 projects listed here. So let's start with, in order, it looks like. Okay, so just the first two are reversed. So I'll start with the woodland sidewalk improvements. So this is FW Hartford and TJ Gamester Avenue to repair dangerous sidewalks. Numerous spots where there's equipment that's damaged sidewalks and sharp metal out of some of the sidewalks, and city councillors have toured these sidewalks, it says. Although similar to other woodland sidewalks requests, the submission is maintained related, including metal shards sticking to the sidewalk. Staff has noticed that this submission was forwarded to the city's Public Works Highway Department to address. Sidewalk was found to be deficient in one area and repaid with a 40-foot section repaved. Remainder of the sidewalk work for this neighborhood has been added to the CIP future project list under the sidewalk construction program for FY '24. So this is, again, an existing CIP project that'll continue to be addressed.
And you know what? We'll lump that with the third one that you see up here, because it's a similar project, and if it's DPW-related, do you want Peter to speak to it?
Yeah, Peter, would you? The first, the way you just talked about is purely a maintenance issue, it was not a capital item. The other ones are addressed already by the sidewalk CIP element sheet, and we will add it to that list.
Great, thanks.
Question?
Sure.
So we annually, or I think every two years, budget of $400,000 for sidewalks.
$800,000 every two years, yeah?
Boy.
$400,000 every year.
Do we grade those the way we grade the street paving? In other words, do we say this sidewalk is the most urgent and the most deteriorated?
We have a sidewalk condition report that we did a number of years ago, probably four years ago, five years ago, and we are this year going through and looking to establish a more annual type of review of the sidewalks. Typically, what happens, it's a combination of people bringing issues to our attention, and a combination of projects, synergy with other projects that we're doing, whether it's a road project, a water project, or something like that. So a lot of times, it's safety-driven, if there's a rough section that needs to be addressed, but oftentimes, it's a matter of people bringing to our attention, and it makes sense, because we're doing another project, and we take care of it. But what we're initiating this year is contracting with somebody to do a revisit of the report and set it up so that, like the roadway, we do a quarter of the city every year, so every four years, the entire city's done. So we're looking to do that with sidewalks as well.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Peter.
Okay, I'll go back to the second item on the list up there, public restrooms in Portsmouth. Looking for public restrooms in downtown Portsmouth. The submitter requested that public bathrooms be installed in the downtown. We're traveling to other U.S. cities and European cities. You can find those public bathrooms, rather than having to go to existing businesses, which may not be able to accommodate people. And this item is being incorporated into other public infrastructure upgrades, including the city's upcoming Market Square upgrades. So this is, again, an existing project. Next item I'll go into is sidewalks on Sagamore Avenue to replace broken sidewalks where asphalt is crumbling. The safe and intact sections around where the Sagamore Apartments are located, and the rest towards the bridge is non-existent. A lot of walkers, especially with the increase of residences and businesses. Crosswalk would also help where Jones Avenue intersects Sagamore near the entrance to the cemetery, not only for walkers, but also kids going to school at the high school in Little Harbor. This project has already been funded in prior year, CIP FY '24 project, TSM 19, PW 68, and the project will move forward as soon as feasible.
So I can speak to that. A lot of the sidewalk is going to get done as part of the sewer extension project that was done along Sagamore Ave, and the road is still in disrepair, or it's being, you know, it's temporarily paved. We're looking at doing the road work, final road work next spring, and the sidewalk will be done as part of that as well.
Okay, keep going. The lighting on State Street, so walking back from Prescott Park on State Street in the evening, it does not have very good lighting. This was the concern, and they're hoping for a way to improve that lighting. That item is funded through the city's Public Works Department in its annual operating budget. The Highway Department will review the brightness of these lights as part of its ongoing initiative. I think that one speaks for itself, unless people have questions.
It's a maintenance item.
Okay. Street paving, Boss and Lawrence. This is the neighborhood of Boss and Lawrence. I've lived there for 16 years. The road and sidewalk condition was bad, and we moved, and it's terrible now. Street paving is prioritized based on volumes of traffic, condition of pavement, and city's pavement management program. The request is existing in CIP projects, TSM 94, PW 78, street paving management and rehabilitation. The plan documents the upcoming streets to be paved.
The other aspect to this, which wasn't noted, was this pending stormwater improvements in that section. There's easements that are required to be able to complete that stormwater work, and that's an ongoing effort. So we're aware of the condition of this roadway, and it is being addressed.
This next one is for sound barriers, I-95 from Woodbury Overpass to Market Street Underpass. This is to create structural sound barriers along the stretch of I-95 to promote and maintain health in the noise-polluted neighborhood close by. According to studies, there's problems with noise, including stress-related illness, high blood pressure, sleep disruption, and also references to Clean Air Act and Noise Control Act and other federal acts about noise and disturbances. There's an existing CIP project, FY '24, B-107, PW NH 44, sound barriers in residential area along I-95 that addresses this issue. New Hampshire DOT has determined that the east side of I-95 is not eligible for state and federal funding. Staffs reach out to determine if a solely-funded city project could be completed. Previously allocated funds can be used to study this request and determine the appropriate funding level for sound barrier project. There's a sound barrier project page on the city's website for more information.
Peter, just want to add to that.
Yeah, so the good news is that DOT is anticipating starting this construction work on the west side of the highway this April, so they're in the process of that. We continue to work with them to try to figure out if there's a way we could fund our own sound wall along the east side. However, there's federal highway rules that seem to prohibit that from an equity standpoint. So that's something that we're continuing to work on, and, you know, it is something we're very aware of, and we don't disagree that it's something that'd be really nice to be able to take care of.
I know that the federal government said we couldn't build them and pay for them ourselves on their land, but we can if we own the land. Is that correct?
That is correct. However, so we had an independent sound engineer go out and look specifically at New Franklin School, and the height of the walls in the area would be 40, 50 feet tall. And the challenge is, if you don't build them long enough, you don't get, you know, you can have the sound come around them. So it is something that we're looking at. You know, ideally, we could build it closer to the road so we weren't dropped down the embankment. There are probably sections of the city that aren't as deep as that, but it is something that we're paying attention to, and the monies identified can go to further studying that. This isn't something that's falling off the radar screen.
Just finding a way.
We understand.
Okay, next one is the sidewalk reconstruction on Maple Haven. This is to remove old sidewalks and grass over, which is part of a larger existing project, CIP 24, in the city's sidewalk reconstruction program.
So there's a number of ones that are associated with the Maple Haven neighborhood. As you may be aware, staff has had a number of meetings in that neighborhood, and we've been working to try to come to some consensus on how to move forward. We are planning on doing a road crossing at Ocean Road to connect the two neighborhoods. That's something that we figured out how to move forward with that, so we're planning on doing that next spring and summer. You know, however, it's, you know, and we are still working to see if we can gain some consensus in terms of the type of project that will be acceptable. So there's a number, the number of items here associated with that.
It was encouraging to see that this sparked the creation of a neighborhood association, and the neighbors themselves started breaking the work into three parts, and some parts are not that controversial. You know, something like Winchester, which is a really narrow street, narrower than all the others, that's harder, because it, the right-of-way starts to go up onto people's lawns. But there's other parts of the Maple Haven that, big, wide streets, and plenty of room to do sidewalks. So it seems to be progressing.
It is, and it's, I would say it's part of our ongoing program, so in terms of creating, I mean, it's obviously, it's the council's decision, but I feel like it is something we're addressing, it is something that we're working to budget, as we get clearer definition of what the projects are.
I thought the process over in Panaway went very well. I thought, you know, it was very clear steps. You know, we took, talked to all the residents, you know, had a poll, came up with a nice solution. But are we following the same, similar process over in Maple Haven?
We did pretty much the exact same approach. There was not a consensus that was reached.
Okay.
So we're going to be finishing up Panaway likely next year.
Yeah.
And so, you know, with the, as resources are available, you know, we are going to continue to work with Maple Haven. They are on the list. It is an old request, so we, you know, we understand that folks would like to address this, but it's just not clear how.
And the Panaway sidewalks came out great.
Yeah, they do look good. I saw them on the street.
Really.
Okay, this is a different Maple Haven request. This is for a bicycle pedestrian, non-motorized study. This request is to update the bicycle pedestrian plan and bring the plan up to date with community needs, along with the Climate Action Plan, reprioritize infrastructure investments, and move towards future bicycle network, and then creating realistic goals for five years, working with SABR and other subgroups of the Portsmouth Climate Action Plan. So I can speak to this one. There's an update to the bicycle pedestrian plan in progress. The Public Works and Planning and Sustainability Department have a proposal. The proposal's basically going to be an update to the 2012 Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. That work will be looking at what's been done since the 2012 plan, what needs to be done since that plan, prioritizing ongoing recommendations for 2014, and then some refinements and changes to the types of bike infrastructure that's built. You know, there's modern, things have changed since 2012 on how they build bike infrastructure, so looking at that, including a robust public outreach process. It'll involve a steering committee and several public meetings to go over that. That RFP should be out on the street in one to two weeks, so we'll be hearing back. The work should get started on that plan in the beginning of next year.
And then I think the idea is to include some of the implementation goals that come from that plan in the conversation this time next year and beyond with the next capital improvement plan.
Yeah, there's a number of items that are addressed, that'll address that.
And just to add to that, I got an update. The state should be finishing up the rail trail. They should be almost in removing everything to Barbary now, and they should be finishing the final coat next year.
They're ahead of schedule, I believe.
They are ahead of schedule, is what I heard last night, yeah.
Yeah, they said the fall of next year, but it's got to be faster than that, the way they're going.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, keep going.
Tackle that one. You can talk about, sorry.
Eric, we talked about the air conditioning in the high school, the Portsmouth High School. Right now, the language wing is one of the few areas in the high school lacking air conditioning. Teachers rely on large fans. We talked about these a little bit, but this is in the, in the language wing. Air conditioning, even more detrimental to teachers who are expected to spend their entire day lacking air conditioning. Beneficial to the school board, help the language wing get AC.
This will start to be programmed in FY '30, which is the last year of this, the plan we're talking about now.
Yeah, they talked about this already as FY '30.
Yep.
So I'll move on. The repaving of Coakley Road and Larry Lane, repaving Coakley Road and Larry Lane is desperately needed, is the comment. Street paving is prioritized based on the volume of traffic, condition of pavement, and the city's pavement management program. This request is existing in CIP 24, and the project number... Peter, do you want to speak to that at all?
No, we, you know, we're monitoring the area, and, you know, dependent upon other types of projects, it can, paving is not just the pavement condition, it's volume of traffic, it's safety, it's if we're doing, oftentimes, if we're doing other projects, we leverage those resources, and the types of activities, whether it's a maintenance-type pavement activity, or whether it's a replacement of pavement, is dependent upon the condition. So, you know, we're aware of the request, and it's part of our pavement management plan that we annually, you know, generate a new plan every year and review, and we will, it'll rise to that level when appropriate.
So Madison Street between Austin and State, residents are parked in the front lawn of Madison Street. Requesting curbing, tree planters, other roadway improvements. Project was added to CIP in 2019 to be completed in '25, but then was delayed to '29. Residents are requesting it be restored to its '25 timeline. The project already exists in the CIP plan. Funding for this project is currently shown in out-years due to funding availability. So that's a matter of funds. Traffic calming on Woodbury Avenue, install traffic calming measures along, all along Woodbury Avenue from Market Street Extension. Bartlett Street intersection with Pacific, attention to areas between 95 and Denet. This is an ongoing CIP project, called out with a specific number.
Yeah, we just had a meeting last night on this topic, and we'll be coming back to the Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee on the 29th of this month. It's an evening meeting to have the final recommendation. There was a consensus that the speed pillows were effective. There was a desire to reduce the number, total number, from eight, and at this point, we're looking at six or five, five or six. So we will be coming back with the final recommendation to Parking, Traffic, and Safety, which will then come to council once that meeting is done.
Sidewalk on Buckminster Way, sidewalk between two Buckminster Way entrances. The Stonegate neighborhood includes 30 homes representing several families, and although they are aware Ocean Road is a state road, they've observed... And although they are aware Ocean Road is a state road, they've observed several sidewalks installed over the years and residents walk along the stretch between Buckminster Way entrances where there's not, not only no sidewalk, but no safe shoulder either. Several residents have voiced a need for this improvement over the years, even requesting it to the city mayor and city council years ago. Look forward to your consideration. This request will be reviewed in conjunction with the update to the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, as we discussed. It could be considered in addition to the project list. Bike Ped Master Plan is currently, community needs, oh, we just talked about the Bike Ped Master Plan and how that'll be looked at, so that should be looked at through the Bike Ped Master Plan process. I'll go on to the next one. The splash pad at the outdoor pool. Request for a splash pad at the outdoor pool in Pierce Island. In the recent updated recreational needs study, the support for building a splash pad somewhere in the city. Staff have been looking at options for those locations. One of the important aspects in citing a splash pad is equity and accessibility. The outdoor pool location is not one that is recommended due to the lack of bus service or bike lane access to the island and creating the Greenland Road rec facility. The thought was to add a splash pad to an upcoming phase, which is currently in FY 30, but also continuing to analyze other locations that might be better, better for accessibility.
Have you looked at community campus possibly?
We haven't at this point.
Just curious whether or not there would be a convenient location to put one out there.
There could be. I mean, we could look at that.
Kate Street.
Kate Street Bridge. Reconstruct the Kate Street Bridge over Houghton Brook. NHDOT red listed bridge, red listed bridge only rated for 6,000 pounds. Fire equipment cannot cross and therefore endangered life in a property on cottage area. It's been in the CIP for like 15 years. The project is already found in the CIP, Citywide Bridge improvements, FY 24 and '25.
Yeah, we're also waiting on state, getting into the state bridge funding program. So that's in part one of the reasons we're holding off.
Elwin Road Side Path. It was in the CIP for seven to 10 years, then disappeared. There's a request for a construction date. The response is the project has been funded and is in the queue for construction. See the city's project page for most up-to-date information. It was removed from the CIP once it was fully funded. Projects are removed for two distinct reasons. They are fully funded, they're no longer possible, given the current condition within the CIP timeline or no longer desired. The funding page is found with this link here under Public Works Projects.
I think this is a good time to plug the Public Works page because there's a host of projects that we have ongoing now. And if you're looking for updates on any particular project or projects, you can sign up and give your email address, and we will include you in the regular updates that we push out to residents.
It's also in the state plan, too.
So replacement of Maplewood Avenue Bridge, Maplewood Avenue Culver Bridge. Another DOT red listed bridge. This project has already been funded. It's in the CIP's project page again on the same, in the same location.
It's going to be, it's going to be bid this year.
Yeah.
We just got permits.
Yeah, the Concomit's reviewed the wetland permit.
So it's going to be bid this year.
Beverly Hill Road Improvements. Reconstruct Beverly Hill Road. It's been in the CIP for 15 years and disappeared. This project's moving forward. Check the city's website for most up-to-date. Again, another project that's taken some time, but it is in process. You can see the update on the city's projects page.
Do you want to give a further update, Peter?
The DOT has approved the final design. We're moving forward. We should be doing land, land right-of-way acquisitions in the near future. It's, the project's moving forward. I'd encourage folks to look at the city's website for the latest updates.
Bartlett Street Railroad Tresal Improvements. This is to widen, a request to widen and raise the railroad underpass. Also been in the CIP for a long time. The city recently secured grant funding to study the reconfiguration of the railroad bridge and intersection, which will determine the feasibility and cost of these changes.
So just to speak to this one, if I may?
Sure.
There seems to be some confusion relative to ownership of that rail bridge. It is a railroad bridge, it's not a city-owned bridge. However, we have worked with developers to get some money secured. And we did a grant application for Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Grant, and we were successful in getting that grant. That's a grant that we will do in collaboration with the railroad to try to revisit the replacement of that bridge, which will address these concerns. It is something that was identified historically in the, in the CIP. There was a period of time when projects that were not city projects were listed in there, and it was deemed confusing, confusing to the general public. So we no longer do that. That includes DOT projects and other federal and state projects. And that's why they are not shown in the, in the CIP.
The next one is the Seacoast Drinking Water Liability Project between Fox Point and Wagon Hill, Newington to Durham. This comment is that new water and 20-inch diameter main under Little Bay. Project bids open in September with a low bid of 27 million, when the city didn't budget enough money. They need a new allocation to cover the 22 million deficit, is the comment.
So I can speak to that. So this project came in way over budget. Obviously, the city is not going to, you know, spend that kind of money. This is not an emergency situation. This is a maintenance planning exercise. And what we're doing is we're going to break the project into parts. And the first part will be doing some on-land repairs to valves so we can isolate the two lines more effectively. We're also looking at alternatives to the, the crossing. In addition, we're looking, running down Route 4 potentially. But we're also working with the regulators to adjust, to allow a longer schedule because the real reason for the high price was that the schedule couldn't be met. It was a, they allowed a certain amount of time that you could work in the water, and the contractors said, no, we can't do that. So they put a really large number on it, knowing that they would likely be in violation if they started and didn't do it. So it was an exercise, you know, they were interested, they didn't want to say no, but they gave us clear feedback saying, if the schedule be adjusted, we can get this price down significantly. So we are working to that end, but we will start and break it up into two phases, and we'll likely have something out on the street for the first phase by the, you know, probably by March or February this year, next year.
Are those limitations by like the Department of Environmental Science or who's setting those?
It's DES, it's Fishing Game, it's.
It's the state.
It's, you know, it's a combination of those folks. And I'm not sure which one exactly. I think it's Fishing Game that's the one that's holding it up the most.
And National Marine Fisheries Service is involved in those decisions. The feds get involved in those permits, too.
Yep.
And question, we have two lines under there now that are old and pitted and showing where. But we'll, we'll fix the valves so that we can go from one to the other if we need to.
Right, so if one, one of the lines breaks, we can isolate it. Right now, the valves, because they're 50-plus years old, they're not working well.
And everybody's afraid to turn them.
We shut them, we're worried that we'll never open it again.
Yeah.
So we're going to get those valves functional, and that way we can isolate it if necessary. And one of the misconceptions on this project was that we were going to eliminate two, two lines and put in one line. The project was going to be a third line, so additional redundancy.
So we'd still, we'd have the 20-inch new one.
Yeah, two.
And the two old ones.
Correct.
With valves that work.
Yep. But this is not, you know, this isn't like dire, it's going to fall, it's going to break today. You know, so this is a maintenance thing. Do we want to get it done soon? Yes. But it's not like we have to do it immediately today.
So the next two requests for, involve sidewalks in Maple Haven, which we talked about in their existing CIP projects. So we talked about the bigger CIP picture. Move in. Route 1 sidewalks for pedestrian and bicycle commuting, Route 1 North and South directions. Portions of this request are in design. There's existing CIP project that plans for complete streets.
Peter, you want to touch on that at all?
The DOT just recently restarted this effort. They're looking to have a public meeting towards January of this year, but they've, they've kind of reinvigorated the effort. They do not anticipate the work being done until probably three or four years out.
That concludes the breakdown of how the 24 projects that were requested by citizens have come to find a place in the CIP, so. Counselor Taber?
Just before we leave these, Sarah Jarvis has had conversations with me over four years about, is there any way that there can be a bike connection from Maple Haven to the rail trail?
Yes.
Either via heritage.
Peter, you want to speak to it?
Well, I, we've already investigated it, initially investigated at least, a trail. We're not sure that there's public access the entire way in terms of, in terms of ownership, but there's actually a trail right now that people use that gets from Maple Haven to the rail trail and comes out on, from Mariette with Mariette. If you continue into the woods at Mariette, you'll hit, you'll hit a trail that takes you all the way to the new rail trail. So we explored that recently and haven't really figured out how to, how to get all ownership of the whole way or right-of-way the whole way, but it looks like it's really feasible. It's not going through a lot of wetlands or anything like that.
It's a challenging mountain bike ride right now.
It's not quite a trail yet, but it's possible.
Well, there's probably some 13-year-olds in Maple Haven who are going to try that.
They do.
But it's, you know, it's a good neighborhood, it's a young neighborhood with a lot of kids and.
I agree. And actually, both sides, the south side and the north side, we believe there's corridors that we can get over to the rail trail. So it's something that Peter and I have been talking about this. This is really exciting to be able to do.
Yep.
Great.
It's going to make a lot of connectivity throughout the city.
Yep.
And I just have one other question. Some of the projects that were saved, better served by another process, were those, the people that submitted those, were they contacted to tell what to do? Were they, I just want to make sure that we, you know, were nice and tell them and kind of direct them where to go and.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure. It's an important point.
Yeah.
We did respond to everybody who put something in here. So why don't we open up to public comment on the, on the, on the 24 that we just walked through? If anyone has anything they'd like to add, I should ask if anyone's on Zoom, Kevin, but I don't believe anyone is. Okay, we can, we'll roll through the list of ones that would be suited by another process or are not appropriate for CIP.
Okay, so the first one here is traffic calming on Pleasant Street. Traffic calming, speed table installation needs to be implemented in the section of Pleasant Street from Hancock to Marcy. Multiple residents have made the request to slow traffic in a very narrow stretch of Pleasant Street. Talks about, you know, different times of day and types of, types of traffic that cause problems in that area. This project is a potential to be CIP eligible under the current CIP, traffic calming, FY 24 CIP project, but should begin with a review from the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee. Staff recommends interested parties contact Parking, Traffic and Safety with this request. So this is a request that we're going to see, a couple of these reference to Parking, Traffic and Safety to get the ball rolling on a project of this nature. I don't know if you want to say anymore, Peter?
So, so traffic calming is a process that's in this, it's in our website or on our website that kind of walks the residents through. It's a, it starts with a request, it has an evaluation stage, but we also, through the process, we need to have, that there's, there's support for a change in a neighborhood. Oftentimes, one or two people come forward with something, and we've learned that if we jump on that and start moving forward, there's oftentimes other folks that don't want to do that type of thing. So the, the traffic calming process is intended to kind of flesh that out. It puts the onus on the person that's requesting the traffic calming measure to do some legwork and to show that there's consensus and there's some interest in the neighborhood so that we know as we move forward, spending staff, time and resources, that it's not just one person that has a specific concern. So the process is online, people can go to that and click on it, and it's a, if they have questions, they can contact Eric EBR, Transportation Engineer, at 603-427-1530. And they can, he can help them out.
Call them.
A little public service announcement.
Eric says, thank you.
Well, we have a lot of requests that look like that same sort of direction. Like the next one, pedestrian crossing and signage, also a reference to Parking, Traffic and Safety for Marcy, South Mill and South Street. So that is better served by making that request as Peter just described. Little Harbor School is the next request. This is at the playground at Little Harbor School to update the structures and to deal with some exposed concrete and rusting metal, a long overdue project. The school department validates the need for these upgrades, and I think I'll let them speak to it a little bit if you wouldn't mind.
I mean, I would simply say that the facilities director has been, they've met three or four times already with members of the PTA, and they're moving forward. That will be funded through the wonderful support that the PTA continues to show and the operating funds that we can make available through the department.
Yeah, and I can add that I've gotten calls from them as all, as well, just to talk about the wetland permit side of things.
Right. I think that was, one of the clarifications was this, this isn't as easy as, we just want to do this. It's a sensitive spot, so we have to be careful.
Sidewalks on Jones Avenue. The request is quite simple. Sidewalks on Jones Avenue. Sidewalk expansion requires a consensus from the entire neighborhood, as well as documentation from the neighborhood. Staff recommends vote for it, the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee. This is another request that is, is better served by sending it to the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee to get consensus of the neighborhood. So Maple Haven Neighborhood. This is a CIP request regarding improvements, optimization of existing sidewalks. So we have another Maple Haven neighborhood request in the project served by another board. The feasibility study is needed in order to evaluate if it's possible to protect, to proceed with this project. Staff is recommending the submitter of this project send it to the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee. I'll keep going. Extending Elwin Park Side Path, the Elwin Side, Elwin Side Path to the Ryne Line or Tucker's Cove neighborhood, currently Oakwood and Regina Street neighborhoods, isolated from surrounding neighborhoods and walking paths by Elwin Drive. This, this request will be reviewed in conjunction with the update to the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan, as we talked about. That Bicycle Pedestrian Plan is going to look at pending projects. It may be eligible for a future CIP project, but that updated pedestrian plan will address This is a request for portable bike racks throughout the city. Please consider purchasing portable bike racks. This, again, another project that will be reviewed by the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. Some good ideas in there in terms of portable bike racks for concerts and that type of thing, and I think there'll be an in-depth public process where these recommendations can be made and evaluated by that process.
Peter, is there anything else you want to say there?
Nope.
Okay.
Bicycle access to Maple Haven. I think we talked about that, that with the trail to, to the new rail trail, and that will be reviewed in conjunction with the Bike Ped Plan, but we're already started looking at that. Maplewood Downtown Complete Streets, Maplewood Avenue. Please return the downtown Maplewood Complete Streets project that was removed from the CIP last year. Overly wide and dangerous street created during urban renewal, prime candidate for narrow, reduced driving lanes. Again, this is a prime project for the Bike Ped Plan and updating that 2012 plan to identify where this fits into that process. Middle Street Downtown Bicycle Pedestrian Connectivity, reinstating Middle Street Downtown project. Again, this is a Bike Ped project that will be looked at through the updated Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. Similar to the Gosling Road, multi-use path on Gosling Road is recommended in the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan to remove the travel lane or median for two-way traffic on Gosling. Another good, good request for the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan, which again, is going to start beginning, beginning of the year, next year. Woodbury Avenue Multi-Use Path, create a multi-use path to bike lanes on Woodbury Ave between Market and Gosling. Again, a Bicycle Pedestrian Plan request that's suitable for that. Wilson to Ocean Road Bicycle Pedestrian Work. Project was described in a past CIP project, but the scope of the DOT project is now from Wilson to Ocean. This is another project that's been looked at in the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. Jump in if you have any additional things, Peter, but I'll move forward.
Maybe Peter can talk to the next two, the traffic circle and the seawall.
Yep. So the Portsmouth Traffic Circle Modernization, modernized the 1950s-era single-lane Portsmouth Rotary to modern high-capacity two-lane roundabout like the one at Lee and in Keene. That is a potential air pollution reduction possibility if that's done that way. It's a state DOT project with the Hampshire DOT. It's a state DOT project with the Hampshire DOT. The project is the highest priority project being requested and added to state's 10-year plan, which I believe is under design or look, look for a design study.
There was money set aside in which to be able to write, to do a design study. They're, they've encouraged the state to move it up in the 10-year plan if possible, but we haven't gotten an answer on that yet. But it is in the 10-year plan.
Right. It's not city property.
No.
This next one's labeled Seawall, but it, it goes a little beyond Seawall. Looks at identifying, looks at a Seawall component in the south end and looks at the end of different streets that go up to the water, impacts from increasing climate change and storm surges, protecting the water and sewer and identifying public access points to the water. The area around the end of Partridge Street and the right-of-way to the water there is one component of that. It doesn't really qualify as a capital project. The city will evaluate if coordination with the private project is feasible for city-eligible portions. Would you want to speak to that, Peter?
No, it seemed like she wanted to piggyback off of a private project. It just wasn't, just given the permitting and all the things associated with it, it just wasn't appropriate from our standpoint.
The next, the next item would be the, sure. The last two. Sherburne School for Senior Housing. Renovation of the school to become a senior housing facility helps affordable housing issue while providing downsized choice for elderly people looking to sell their houses and live in a smaller place. Priority given to Portsmouth residents, adding a second floor and structural design building also makes sense. Ball fields could remain and enhance the youthful activities surrounding the facility. Corner lot available for compatible use, tree benches. This decision is a policy decision that would be made by the City Council. Project submission does not qualify as a CIP project. And this last one is a land acquisition funding change request that the CIP policymakers should set aside 2% point seven million in FY24, the budget annually for the purpose of land conservation, open space protection. The staff analysis is although there is an existing CIP item for land acquisition for conservation purposes, the creation of a funding level, policy percentage for a capital project is a policy decision of the council within itself, not a capital request.
Am I correct in that we do set aside a certain amount of money every year though into a fund for that?
So there's, yeah, the last year's CIP and this year's CIP, and then there's also the Conservation Fund, which sets aside money from current use penalty. So when project is turned out, taken out of current use, there's a 10% penalty assessed. That goes into the Conservation Fund.
I can't imagine you have a lot of current use still in the city.
I have a lot left. And that was the, that was the basis for that request, starting last year, to put money into that fund.
So. What current uses? Is that what you're asking?
The current.
So, right, there is a pen, there is a penalty, yes. It's under state law. So basically they, you have to have more than the certain, the state sets up, you have to have more than a certain amount of acreage and you get to lower your taxes if you're doing agricultural or it's farmland or it's some sort of recreation purpose or conservation, that sort of thing. So that's what allows you to do that. But if you take it out of that, then you pay the penalty for, for doing so. Sorry, I know that from my work.
Oh, I didn't think.
I deal with that a lot.
I didn't think the state would let us impose a fee on our own.
No, 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 it is state, state allowed.
Would there be any questions from the folks here on Zoom relative to what we just walked through with those in the category of better served by another process? Happy to hear your comment. Come on up. Grab a microphone if you would and state your name and address.
Sure.
Thanks.
So our big viewing public.
I was one of those people for a long time. I'm Kate Hatum, 1 Astree in Portsmouth. I'm one of the PTA parents that's a co-chair of the Playground Committee for Little Harbor. As we stated in our request form, the playground is old, unsafe, dated, to say the least. In May, my son broke his arm on a dilapidated zip line on the playground, which he's still many, many months later wearing a brace and doing occupational therapy for his injuries. Hasn't been able to play soccer, do all the activities that he loves, and he's not the only one that's been injured on that playground. We can't afford not to address the safety issues at the Little Harbor Playground right now. It's a major accident waiting to happen. It happened to me. It's going to happen to somebody else. It has happened to many other children that I'm aware of over the years. It was built almost 30 years ago. Safety standards have significantly changed in the past three decades. I don't want any more children to get injured there. I don't want them to have to go through what I went through or what my son went through. So I really do hope that the city takes notice that the PTA can't do this alone. We need the city, we need the school board, we need to kind of work together to figure out how to get this project done. Did meet with Ken. There are some things that the city has granite slab sand that we hope to utilize that he said that we can have. It's awesome. Makes that process so much easier. But we also need money. So that's why I'm here tonight, to hopefully kind of just send our message. It was my understanding that when Don Darrow redid their playground, five or so however many years ago, the city did provide some funds, the school department provided funds and the PTA provided funds. So I'm hoping that Little Harbor can, we can work something like that up too. The PTA certainly will be fundraising. Zach and I have talked on the phone several times about how can we finagle some money from the school department budget as well. But I also think we need to figure out how, as a city, we want to support this project too. It's, so when, when this happened to my son, I started to make calls and figure out, okay, how do we rectify the situation? How do we make something happen here? And you can correct me if I'm wrong too, but I believe DPW manages all the city playgrounds except for the school playgrounds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And to me, as a parent, I was flabbergasted, to say the least. The, the playgrounds that are most utilized every single school day by hundreds of children aren't really managed. It's, it comes to a parent who has something happen to them that realized, they're just looking around and says, oh my God, well, how has nothing been done for 30 years to this playground? Besides, you know, the, the bare bones, you know, wood chips and stuff like that. So I guess I was hoping to get a little bit more insight on the process for how can we come up with, so there's a few different tiers here. How do we come up with a bigger parks department or something that's managing all of the green spaces in the city? But also, how do we access funding now for a playground that is well overdue for renovation? Peter and I have also spoken on the phone, and I know you spoke with Ashley, who's also the co-chair of the Playground Committee. We don't want to just replace equipment. We want, we know it's in the wetlands buffer zone right there where the, where the structure currently sits. We want to improve the whole area. We want to address the drainage. We want to make it a safe place to play, but we also want to be good stewards of the environment. So it's not just merely replacing equipment. We want to do it right and we want to do it for the safety of our children, but also for the, the betterment of our environment. So I'm not sure what I expect to hear from you guys. I was disappointed that it didn't make it onto the plan. So I guess I'm wondering, how do we get it to make it on the plan? Or how do we access other funds that already exist, whether it's in the DPW budget or the Rex Department budget or somewhere to help, even in small ways, to move this project forward?
Zach, Nathan, do you want to take a stab?
First, let me apologize because your story is new to me. It's not new to us, clearly, because there's members of the team who know. I don't think there's any question that there can be work done and that there's funding that we can direct. I will tell you that in the conversations that I've had, and I don't want to create yet another conversation, but in the discussions that I've had, the Don Darrow Initiative was a community playground initiative because it stood alone in that area of the city, that part of the city. And so the support that was, the support that came outs, from outside of the school department, from the city, came because there wasn't another playground, a five-minute walk down the street, right? So I, I, I don't think that we expected at this point that the city would be conditioned necessarily to find additional funding, but, but I know that we had great success with the work that we did at Don Darrow.
Yeah.
And I know that other than the, the fear, if you will, of the impact that we might have and how we have to tread lightly, I've, I've seen the playground and I certainly believe that it needs, it needs significant work. And, and I think that together we can do that. And so in the conversations that I've had with Mr. Lynch, my sense was that we were moving in that direction. I probably should be involved in the conversation more because he's.
I wrote your name down.
He's probably. Ken, Ken is probably appropriately careful not to promise more than he thinks he can promise. And, and I should be.
You'll write me a check for $200,000?
I should be appropriately careful as well, but I, I mean, I think, I don't think I'm talking about a $200,000 project. If I were, we'd be talking about, we'd, we'd have to come back and talk about, you know, a different approach, but I certainly think that, that we have the wherewithal to do what needs to be done for the playground.
All right.
And.
I'll get your number before we leave.
I'd just like to add, I think that, I'm sorry what happened, but I think we should also look at some of our area community groups that we have that really try to help in these areas. Cause I bet, I mean, as a member of the ELCS, I'm sure if we approached them and talked to them to see whether or not there's any national grants we could go after, there's a possibility we could do that as well. And that might help go towards getting the funding to do it sooner rather than waiting for it to be in a long-term plan. I think we need to do something more immediately.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And I'm willing to help you look into that if you need it. You know how to reach me.
All right. Perfect. Making friends tonight, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I'll just add to the counsel, Mauro, going through that process, I think we better changing the process, we'd only delay things and I wouldn't want to do that. But I'd want to, you know, move forward and find a solution as soon as possible.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
The producer tells me that Matt Glenn is on Zoom and has his hand raised. So Matt, please go ahead, if you would, with your question or your comment.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for making it accessible over Zoom. So Matt Glenn, I live at 34 Harrison Ave. It's really great to hear that, oh, and I'm also currently serving as president of Seacoast Area Bicycle Riders. So we are very appreciative to hear that there's a, an update coming to the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. You know, it's great to hear there's going to be a lot more opportunity for community input and hopefully realistic goals for the next five years because we've got a great plan already, but it does seem like there are missed opportunities and there are, you know, roads that get repaved without improvements. And so we're really excited about that. An effort toward building out a real network and I'll, I'll just keep stressing outward network every time I get a chance. The one thing I wanted to suggest, I think the CIP has had for a while, $50,000 a year for bicycle and pedestrian planning. And I'm wondering if, if you're not adding any additional projects this go-around, since you're waiting on a, a bigger process to, to kind of choose, would you consider increasing that amount just to have, have that money in the budget? And I do know there's a lot of federal money for multimodal projects that could be applied for, so it could be a benefit to that. Thank you, and we're looking forward to being engaged.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. I understand there's no one else on Zoom, let alone with their hand raised. So if, if I can indulge the council, I'd like to flip-flop the order of the agenda to talk, to go to public comment, because I know there's several folks here that haven't spoken on anything we've spoken about. So I'd like to open it up now to folks who might want to tell us why they're here and what they're interested in. So join us up here and give us your name and address, if you would.
Sure.
My name is Greg Abear. I'm at 183 Hillside Drive and I want to bring up a topic that we've, we've been in the Traffic and Safety Committee with as well. And because of the timeline of how things have happened, I wanted to get in front, not just in front of city council members, but some other folks involved in town who may or may not be aware of it. So brought a visual aid to help with the beginning of it, then I'll kind of, I can put it back up later. For those of you who don't know, the Hillside Drive is here, Route 1 bypass, you know, landmarks to help out, like Toyota is here and high school, you know, just to give you an idea where we are here. I'll come back to these drawings in a minute. So this neighborhood, you've been around, you know, houses in 1940s and for about, well, we know is 50 years, people have been using a cut-through to get to town. And that's, it's interesting listening to all the other issues that are happening in town, just how much of this happens. Shared spaces that nobody's really sure, about the bike path and things like that, how, how things come together and become habits. And so what happened, and I'll read the, the letter that we put out to our neighbors. And it said, Dear City Council, because that was our intended audience at the end, the Hillside Drive residents request that in advance of the Greenleaf and Lafayette intersection traffic calming steps. You can tell we've talked to Peter before already here. A sidewalk be installed on the west side of Greenleaf from Hillside Drive connecting to the intersection of Lafayette and South Street as part of Portsmouth City's Improvement Plan in the spring of 2024. The ABC Building Cut Through that has provided our neighborhood safe access to downtown as well as our children's path to school, the library and to Lafayette Playground was fenced off over Labor Day weekend. The ABC Building Cut Through has been used, we wrote in our letter, over 30 years and as we went around and my wife canvassed the neighborhood to ask people to get people's input, we found out it was closer to 50 years that that cut-through has been used. And it has, without that, has forced our whole neighborhood to cross Greenleaf, where speed monitors have revealed that the average speed is nearly 50% over the posted limit. We must then cross the intersection of Lafayette and Greenleaf, an intersection the city has already identified as problematic for pedestrian and vehicle traffic. Because of this unexpected change, we believe the fence creates an urgent and significant need for pedestrian sidewalks. So we ask that the city prioritize a sidewalk to address pedestrian safety, improve walkability and be a first step in traffic calming. We are hoping to remedy the situation as soon as possible to ensure the safety of the community. The Hillside Drive community very much appreciates all your quick actions so far, and this was the Traffic and Safety Committee helped us out with some early mitigation steps, and look forward to your response to our request. And so we talked with our neighbors. There's 36 residences on Hillside Drive. 33 residences voted in favor of getting sidewalks at this area, Greenleaf, along there. So it's 92% of residents responded to this and said, yes, we agree with this. We would like to move forward as soon as we can. And we think that that's a result not just of a, oh geez, it's less convenient, but when we talk to people, we realize that of the 36 residences, all the adults, of course, who live in the home, so there's 29 children, we were making 400 passes a week through that cut-through, whether it was school, playground, doctors and dentist's office that are in the ABC Buildings, just walking to town. Part of what makes Portsmouth so great is you can walk to places and that's part of what draws people here. And so again, 92% of us agreed with that. And after looking at, kind of then we go back and you kind of look and see, well, what does it look like here? I apologize to people behind me here, but these folks know what it looks like. So this is, there's a spur here. So these are houses and there's a little spur to Hillside Drive with two residences here, and this was the cut-through. And so Thursday, or yeah, Friday afternoon, I have a middle schooler, I have an elementary, middle and high schooler, but middle schooler cut-through here to walk to school. Tuesday morning, there was a fence there with a sign up that says, no trespassing, you'll be prosecuted. And so from that moment, it's, you know, as we started off, you know, some kids will say, well, okay, I can get around that fence, and then the fence is being extended. So it's, it's not a message and the city has done some efforts to try and talk with the landowners and they're not interested in talking. And like every neighbor, we kind of wish there'd been discussions before something like that happens, but I don't know if too many people are going to say they're a middle schooler. We'll just go through and we'll hope for the best. That's not how we're going to send when there's a sign that says we'll prosecute you. So that has forced us down into here and it, this is just the place where people are leaving to get home, getting, looking to get out of the city. And, you know, if you're counting those of us who, when we come back from the, from downtown, take a right here and are going about 10, 11 miles an hour, the average speed has been 30. So people are coming down a 20 mile an hour road, and I'm guessing here, but they're going an excess of 40 miles an hour. And when the, the traffic bollards, is that the right word? The posts?
Right.
Yeah. When those are in place, so people don't have to slow down, they swing out into the other lane. So they're coming across and it's, it's frightening, frankly, to pull it there in a vehicle, but then to cross on foot is even worse. And so this is also the planned path to get to the high school as well. But so I have three children, so I'm very focused on that, but it's also about all the people too. People who are walking their dogs, bicycles. We have grandparents that come and watch children in the neighborhood, that stroller access. All of those things have now changed over here. And so we're, we're going to get some flashers in here to try and slow people down at a crosswalk, but we, that doesn't get us across Greenleaf. And so what we're asking for is a sidewalk here. The sidewalk, I'm sorry. So where the cut-through would be here in this parking lot, this is a mix of professional and residents. And then the sidewalk starts here, just after the entrance into the ABC Buildings. And then you have South Street, which is an excellent regulated intersection that stops traffic in all directions. And we have, everybody can cross there, there's no issue. So we're asking for a sidewalk to get us up to there. And we'd love to have one, you know, tomorrow, but we know that's not how it works. And so we're asking for you to, to have this, and Karen, I'm going to borrow your words, is to rise to the top of all these. And that because this happened, you know, literally less than a week before the submission date, and I know that's sort of looking forward, we're asking for a committee member to, to help push this forward so we can have this happen in the spring of 2004. So we have safe passage for kids to school, grandparents with strollers, regular people walking to businesses, all of us walking to town, whether it's Fourth of July or anything else, that's how we go. And it's been closed off. So if you have, and I, I don't want to speak for everybody behind me, but I know that I appreciate my neighbors coming, as most of us, I think, who are left here are my neighbors. And it's been, it's been reaffirming to say, "Hey, can everybody get together for a meeting?" And then you have 30 people show up at 8 o'clock on a weekday night when everybody's got dinner and everything, because it's that important to people. And we've had Andrew Bagley and the mayor came to one of our meetings, too, which was great. I mean, just to have them come down and say, "Hey, what's happening?" And to hear it, and Andrew's been helpful because he's on the Traffic and Safety Committee. And Peter's had great ideas for us as well. We just want to get it on everybody's minds, and it was very helpful to see how this process works. And we know we're asking for something that is a part of the process, but not the mainline way that things go, but to get us right up to the top of this so that we can make sure we have safe passage as soon as possible.
Understood, thank you. Peter, do you want to touch on this at all or add color?
You know, it's, I think it's a very reasonable request. I understand, it really, it comes down to, you know, we have to prioritize. And ultimately, the city council has to make decisions related to this. We have a submission process, which, as I said to you, you know, you missed it. So I couldn't flex on that because we told other people, you know, that you'd have to wait till next year. But there are, you know, appealing to the, the council is the appropriate way of going. You know, to, to that end, you know, I've, you know, anticipating this, I've asked staff to take a look at it. We have the arborists going out, there are a number of mature trees along that edge of the roadway that would, would be probably taken down as a result of this. Some of them, I think, are in rough shape, so they might be appropriate to, for them to be, you know, taken down. But I think it's something that, you know, we understand the, the challenge you guys are under. It is, I have had friends that lived on that, in that neighborhood, and I used that cut-through for a very, very, very long time myself. So I understand the difficulty when all of a sudden there's a block there.
I'd like to add that this time last year, we had a group of residents come in and request that a seemingly limited project on Edmund Avenue be changed and modified to include sidewalks.
Correct.
And it was in this setting that the conversation came up. And as a result, the council and the planning board, through the process, did add that. So, and that's part of what we're here to do, is to try and figure out how's the best, what is the best path forward. So just want to say there is precedent for that.
Just so I may, the reason I'm asking staff to take a look at this is because I really want to get a handle on the order of magnitude of cost, you know, and whether we have adequate space there to do the work. I believe we do.
Do we have enough of a right-of-way?
Yeah, the right-of-way looks like it's adequate. So, but, you know, I want to make sure we, you know, I'm not speaking out of turn, so.
So by the time it comes back to Planning Board, could that be an add-on where we have at least the figures and whatnot so that we have a good idea?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, and with that in mind, I brought back the schedule to remind folks that on December 21st, we'll talk as a planning board. On January 17th, the staff will brief the council on what we've learned tonight and throughout the process and what the planning board had to share. And so there'll be another possibility, opportunity there to speak. February, we'll have a public hearing there and multiple opportunities to speak. And we can continue to research and find out what this would, would, would cost.
We also do a public hearing at Planning Board-
We do, on December 21st.
So on, yeah, so on December 21st, the Planning Board will actually get a presentation and move it forward, but there'll be a public hearing piece of it. So, and I, I am the representative on the Planning Board, that's why I'm saying all this. So I'm more than happy to, to talk about this once, especially if Peter can get us all the details on it, whether it's feasible, the cost. I think the Planning Board can help make a recommendation to try to add it in.
We'll do the best we can to get as much detail as possible.
Thank you.
I think in lieu of a hard and fast number, perhaps we mention it in the narrative and work to, to provide the number as soon as we can.
Yeah, it, obviously, without doing a full design and getting a bid, we don't have an actual number, but, you know-
Right, an estimate. I always think the hardest part when we're doing these things is whether or not we already have the right-of-way, right? Because trying to negotiate the right-of-ways is the hardest part. So knowing we actually have the property to build this on will be, I think, a good to-know.
They also, to acknowledge that loss of six, seven mature trees is a significant issue.
That will go before trees and greenery?
That'll go before trees and greenery.
I think the loss of life would be worse, so I think-
I don't disagree, but, you know, I don't want to diminish the role trees play in our, in our life.
We'll find another place. We planted 400 trees for the 400.
Yeah.
Counselor.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Greg and your neighbors all for getting together and organizing. It makes it a lot easier on this, on our side, you know, to show that you're all in unison, you all agree. I know this area very well, I grew up on Greenleaf Ave. I used to play with my friends on Hillside Drive and, you know, we'd go around the ABC Buildings. You know, I coached the high school. I know several of my freshmen on the football team cut-through there, walked to, walked to school. So I think safety of children and stuff like that, I would hope that staff, council, everyone involved would try to make this a priority as much as possible.
Appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here wish to speak on anything? I'm thinking Greg did a pretty good job representing the neighborhood, but I don't want to assume that. Okay, great. So this is a point in the meeting where we talk about what if, what are the recommendations that this group might want to discuss and bring forward as part of the process. So I'm going to tee that up to the three counselors, see if there's any thoughts you want to add. Would it help to go back to?
I think we mostly want to start around the CEIP eligible projects where we started because those aren't currently in the plan. And you need a recommendation as to whether or not we want to work to fit them in the plan, correct?
Right.
Okay, just make sure I'm in the right place. Well, I think the school really has talked a lot about the air conditioning and they're not, if you guys aren't on board and trying to move forward with that, I think it's going to be awfully hard for us to do it without you. So I don't know, my other fellow counselors, but I-
No, I think-
For now, it's not, it's not feasible.
Right, I mean, for $8 million, you can also raise Prescott Park and-
I'm thinking by the time we actually do, it'll be $10 million, so.
No, I agree. I think it'd be a great idea, I think it'd be great to, you know, have comfy chairs and everything, but stuff like that. I know as a student, you know, there are some very hot days, but I'm tempted to the recommendation of the school department.
Thank you.
Moving on to Maple, I'm sorry, Haven Park Lighting.
If I may?
Yep.
I would suggest we have an existing, monies identified for parks and cemeteries. There is some monies that have been identified annually that we use some of that money to do a small, if, do an outreach effort. And if it's, if there does seem to be interest, that we do a small design charade of sorts and get, you know, input to define what a project would be in that, in that park.
At Haven Park.
At Haven Park. Yeah.
Could we actually put that out to Flashfoot? And get some, just a simple little, is that a worthwhile use of that?
Has a limited number of-
Oh.
Think you'd want it more geographically.
I was thinking of surveys, whether or not there's interest.
There's different surveys we could do, yeah.
I was thinking if you could do a survey just to try to find out how much interest there is before we even get to trying to design something.
We could work with Monty, and maybe we put a QR code at the entrance of each thing. And as people walk through, it's like interested in, you know, park improvements, you know, give us some ideas.
Okay, that'd be great.
And then that, that'll help define it and then-
I think that would start the process, at least we'd know how much interest there was, whether or not we even look farther down the road.
Do we have lighting at Goodwin Park?
We have lighting at Goodwin Park, yes. Yeah, actually, some, some new pedestrian lighting went in just the other day.
Right, okay, so that's a similar-
If you have another chance to go by, well, you'll probably get by this weekend, so.
Okay, great. Now we're up to Public Art Trust Fund.
I'm all for that.
I think it's a good idea. I guess I would look to staff to give us recommendations as to the levels of what would be reasonable financially to start something like that. You know what I mean? Is $25,000 a good annual amount? Or is there another amount staff would recommend?
Well, keep in mind that there is an existing balance in the Public Art Trust account now.
Okay.
The idea would be to build upon that. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but-
Yeah, no, I think, you know, Christine Dwyer and the Public Art Review Committee for recommending this, and I think this is a great idea, you know, won't miss any opportunities for matching funds and stuff. And I also think it's important that we maintain our current art, you know, that we have some sort of plan.
Would the idea to be to place 25 in the next six years? 25 each year for the six years?
Yeah, yeah, for a total of 150.
Okay, thank you. And the last one would be the Historic Record Artifact Conservation and Storage Assessment.
I think this has come up through a committee, there's been a lot of work on it, and-
I do like the idea of looking at L-Chip grants for this specific project. Being somebody who writes a lot of, does a lot with putting money into L-Chip grants, into the L-Chip program, very familiar.
I think we need to know the scope and what kind of square footage and all the work that's planned in this feasibility study, so.
Right, and is there a location?
Yeah, and a location.
That is part of the assessment.
Okay, is to assess the, okay.
I think the other thing that Bears noting is, and something we haven't quite figured out or drilled down enough on is the formation of a public-private partnership and the roles of the different organizations. And, and are the needs the same? And can the city's needs be met in the same way that the other folks can? So I think there's a fair amount of work that still needs to be done in regard to that.
Right, but we're talking private partnerships, we're talking, you know, the Athenaeum, we're talking about nonprofit organizations, not for-profit organizations. And I think there's a really-
I would caution you, there is a lot of material out there, and we would be taking on a lot of liability and taking on a lot of challenges managing historic records.
Doing it ourselves.
Or that kind of a partnership.
So-
Okay.
To piggyback on that, we just-
Grab your mic. I'm the mic.
Just to piggyback on that, due to legal guidelines that we need to maintain, we would have to maintain the ownership and the oversight of all of our items. So we can't hand it off to anybody else. So it would, the auspices would fall, it would all fall on us. The challenge.
There's a lot of overlap from artifacts, records, you know, when you start talking records, you get a-
Yep.
So there's, you know, we understand the need.
Yep.
And I think it's definitely worth, you know, having further, having a study done to figure out, better define it. But as the manager, you know, pointed out, it's, you know, the private-public partnership portion of it is, needs to be teased out and better understood before we-
I appreciate the-
I think it's also important to note, and we had, we had recommended they increase the amount that they had requested. I think even they didn't understand the vast amount of artifacts alone in the city, never mind records. The minute they opened it up to records management also, you have 32 departments in the city that all have records.
Right.
On top of all of the others, on top of all, you know, the Athenaeum and everybody else who also have a vast amount, so.
To Abby's point, the committee initially asked for $65,000 for the initial conservation assessment. Staff is recommending that number be closer to 150. And even though the group asked for a year-two number, I think we're cautioning that it's too premature to know what that year-two number is.
The year-two number did come from staff, but our concern was just that the year-one number might not be enough to get, and the timeline might be more than they had anticipated to get through everything. So just to kind of revisit, make sure the number's still true in year-two next year.
So you basically use the 75 as a placeholder, but might have to update it next year.
Exactly, exactly.
Gotcha. I'm, I'm good with that plan.
Yeah, I mean, just the library's collections alone are, there's a lot of material there that often doesn't, is looking for space. And then the Athenaeum has got overflow and, and our own city records, I mean, the, the tax records and maps going back to the 18th century, so there's a need.
There's a significant need. It's just how, how do we, you know, is it, is it the city's role to provide for those other entities when we can't provide for existing needs?
This also doesn't eliminate our need to do some of our own stuff on property, just to kind of clarify that a little. We still have stuff that has to stay within the building, so.
No, I agree, I think this is a need. I think the fact that this has come through a Blue Ribbon Committee as well shows that we've addressed this as, as the council, the mayor's addressed this as a priority.
So for the purpose of taking notes that, that one of you wonderful people can report back on December 4th, should we place 150 in 25 and 75 in 26?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
I think we also should investigate L-Chip grants towards that on top of it because that might actually make up the difference of what we might be short.
It's sort of in the size range for an L-Chip grant.
Is there anything we didn't discuss that anyone wants to bring up? Because I think this brings us to-
No, because existing projects are existing projects. And I, yeah, I think that the, the other process for the most of the rest of them are, are in process or, you know, they really should look at parking, traffic, and safety before they come. Or there's a mass, you know, pipe pedestrian plan that needs to be done in connection with the master plan that's being done and all those updates. So I, I think we're in the right direction.
And just to Counselor Playlock's question, we did provide everybody that we've recommended parking, traffic, and safety the link for contact.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure anyone that was felt like, "Oh, I didn't make it." You know, they're going to have a negative feel, but make sure that we reassure them that, you know, which direction.
And all these sheets are posted online, the links are all live. So even like the project pages that we reference that are underlined, they, it goes back to the pages online. They can go look.
Okay, thank you.
We were careful to notify everyone who submitted something before we provided this list live to, to the public for the purpose of the meeting.
That they'd know, great.
Thank you.
What's our timeline for the revision on the bicycle pedestrian master plan?
Next year.
The RFP should go out in the next week or two, so about later than that. And then that'll take roughly a month to get submissions, pick, pick a contractor, and then the work will start right after that, so.
Early 24?
I'd say by January, February.
Yeah.
It would start.
Start, great. So we could be talking about a draft in the summer, maybe?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be much more than six months. I don't, yeah, it's not a whole year process.
Okay, and they'll have an input process for that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and an advisory committee as well.
Okay.
Great, is there any additional public comment we could take in? Well, thank you all, I think we'll adjourn for the night, and thanks for your input. We appreciate the time.
Thank you, guys.